Nice.
Oh, he's got it. All right. All right. Good evening and welcome to the school committee meeting of March 6, 2022. This meeting is being broadcast on WHCA and also being recorded. We are going to go into executive session, but before we do that, we'll do the pledge of allegiance. Please.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, in the name of our God.
Okay. So in a moment, we will be going into executive session. There will be two components. One, to discuss the strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body. And two, to review and approve executive session minutes pursuant to general law, Chapter 30A, Section 21a7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements, purpose seven, citing open meeting law. After the executive session, we will continue with our meeting and the agenda. Can I get a motion to go into executive session?
No move.
Second.
And that is a roll call vote. Yes, yes. Fred, Beth, Chris, Mike. Chris, yes. Hillary.
Yes.
Yes.
Good. David, Dawn?
Yes.
Michelle, Steve?
Yes.
And you don't have to vote on that. Okay. We are in executive session.
Yes.
All right. We are back from executive session and we're going to just move right into the agenda. So the first item we have is public comment, if there is any. Anyone here for public comments? Not at this time. Okay. Student advisory report.
I don't see any today.
So we'll keep going. All right. Next, we have some minutes to approve. So I'd be looking for a motion to approve the minutes of February 2nd, 2022.
No move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Great. Next, we'd be looking for, I'd be looking for a motion to approve the meeting minutes of February 9th, 2022.
No move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Great. Unanimous. All right. And then I think we're going right into the superintendent's report.
So, so starting out, we talked about goals as I progressed throughout the year, just kind of updating you where we're at. So just reviewing the goals, one of the goals was to work on early childhood education, full day K. You'll see a presentation put together by the EEC committee that's posted on the website. I'm going to grace you, I'm going to give you some grace and not show you the video that I did. I am not comfortable behind camera, but Marcus Casey and Dr. Foley put together a great script for me and did a lot of edits. So hopefully it grabbed some attention. My kids think I'm YouTube star now, so it's awesome. And to David's credit, he gave us some really good ideas on how to frame it for a different generation other than a 54-year-old guy. So thank you on that.
Thank you.
And it was, I think it's beneficial and I'll show you the presentation. So we're progressing on that. I think no matter what happens out of school committee as we move this budget forward, I think this is a topic that will continue if it doesn't move forward. We'll continue this, this discussion on, on, on early childhood education, which I think we have to start branching off to pre-K as well, looking at where we are as a district. Another goal is to work with MSBA in the building project. Fred's going to talk a little bit about today. In the building subcommittee, we actually did a site, a tour with proposed, with some designers. Today was the day. The building is progressing as follows. We do have a OPM or owner's project manager, which is the Colliers Group, and that's progressing along. I think I have George here a little bit to talk about where we are with MTSS. We've talked a lot about interventionists and where they are in the budget. We're going to transition those names from interventionists to coaches, which a lot of districts use, and what they're actually doing in the classroom. So George, can you, can you give a little heads up of where we're at with, with, with testing and MTSS?
Hey, folks. Nice to see you. So right now, at this point in time, our interventionist, as we know, are both, or coaches are both in the district and at the school level. And really what's taking place now at this point of the year is we're in our six-week cycle again of where we're having groupings. And these groupings are based on the data of our second interim assessment. And what's taking place in those is that students are being grouped by both where they're at from an academic standing of positivity and where they're at from an academic standing of holes or gaps or learning loss. And then during this time when they have power block, the, these groups go with a certain educator or paraprofessional to really focus on that gap area. And if you're a student who's now succeeding or progressing, you also have a teacher with you where you get to extend or do something different, whether it's a book research project or whatever it is to extend that learning time. As we move forward into getting ready now for MCAS, that's going to change a little bit where students will then move back to, for power block or this intervention coaching time, they'll be able to move back to their regular scheduled teacher as we start to prepare for our MCAS testing. That's basically at the elementary school. At the middle school level, what we found that meets with most success, just based on the, the staffing and the students, is that really we're using our interventionists to now push in and co-teach with another teacher. So example, we have identified data gap, we have identified gaps in students' learning from data. And when this time is taking place, we're using, when our interventionist or our coaches do not have a small group with them, they're pushing into the classes with the students with the most needs who are not identified as special ed, so that we can have a co-teaching model, so that we can get to those students right in their regular classroom, in their natural environment, as it were, so we can try to remediate those. That has also gone now to the high school level. The high school level is now designed throughout the course of the year, sort of intervention study halls. And those intervention study halls or those intervention strategies courses are for students who are identified using IXL and ELE and math, where they have gaps. And the staff, the counselors, the academic staff have identified those students and placed them during the course of their regular schedule, instead of like in a study or instead of in a regular strategies class, into these classes with staff who are now know the data, know what they're looking for, and can help them. I think the overarching goal of this is that for the first time between data meetings with regular ed teachers, and for the first time, we are now looking at the data of individual students as we progress throughout the day and throughout the week. So it's live, it's up to date, it's in real time, and we're able to offer not only the regular education that the students need, but now we're able to remediate those gaps that we've always had. Like I've always said, this is not something that is new to education, it's just actually new to Whitman Hansen. And as we proceed and as we move forward, I think the combination of taking our interventionist and pushing into the regular classroom with all students, and then still having the ability to put students in small groups, is going to be where we find the ability to catch kids up in real time and not have them then miss anything while they're being caught up. So that's, that's one of the major things. I know another piece that is part of Jeff's goals is the whole equity. We did have an equity audit. One of the things that we're looking forward to as we sort of galvanize all the things we need to work on is not only our ELL population and perspective and, and what we're doing from a curriculum standpoint for those students, but it's also what does, what is a workable definition of the term equity in the Whitman Hansen Regional School District? I think sometimes when we hear what the word equity, it goes to everything that we know in our life that we associate with that word. And I think fleshing that out, I think having some discussion and I think having a working definition of what equity is, and, and I will say, I'm not that smart of a guy, so there's great graphics that explain it. That's what we're looking to put forward. So then we put forward to our district, we put forward to our school committee, we get feedback, and then we can all refer to, well, wait a minute, we're talking about this definition of equity as we look at things like what do students need to be successful? And what do students need to be successful, not from how they look, where they look, where they're from, all of those things, but what they need. And if we're going to get to a state of equity, we need to make sure we can do that. A further thing that we're looking at and we're going to be analyzing and acting on next year as far as equity is, do students who might not look like other students or who might look like some students or some subgroup of students, are they receiving the education and learning about people in literature, in history, in things that look and resemble them? You will notice that, or maybe you don't, but at the end of every MCAS test, certain grades take what's called a vocal survey. The vocal survey is something that it's asked broad range questions that lead from social, emotional, that lead to equity, that lead to economics, that lead to bullying, that lead to safety. And some of the questions they ask is, do you read and see people in literature that resemble people that look like you or that look like your classmates? And when we really look at that, a lot of the answers, over 40% of the answers at the different grade levels are, no, we don't. So one of the things when we talk about equity is that we have to start looking at the characters that we, we, we teach in literature, the books that we read, the authors that we look at, the people, the gender of the people that we look at, to say, is this representative of everybody in Whitman Hansen? And so those are the real pieces that Jeff has really promoted so that we can work on as we move into further equity as not only this year, but as this project goes forward.
Thanks, George. Fred?
Are these new positions?
No. These are positions, these are people who currently work with us, who we are just talking with, using, and moving forward.
So we're not adding?
No, but the code, not, not at this point in time. Yeah, we, we might have some.
Yeah, we're changing what they're.
Yeah, we might have restructuring coming, but we're not, we're not adding. We're just saying, you know, what is best and what conversations need to be had. But most of this is happening, though, with our current employees, like in their current roles, and we're just having these discussions.
The gaps that we're finding are normal gaps and aren't anything that we could say is based on COVID. Remediation is a normal way of us interacting with kids or maybe changing the methods?
Sure.
But we've been always able to.
Right. I would, I would say this, if we go back to George Bush and No Child Left Behind, this was that, that global attack, that was the global large-scale piece to try to get to the same thing. All kids will be reading at grade level by grade three. That did not meet with success for various reasons, but it highlighted the fact that in everyone's educational life, not all kids are on the same page. This has been magnified now by the epidemic, but it has always been there. I truly think it'll always be there because all students are different and they learn differently. So what we're finding is there is some of that. Like I missed fractions in grade six of March, so I need help with fractions to get to higher math thinking, and we can catch those students up. It's also, though, I do not have consonant blends at first or second grade. And so now we have the ability to target those skills because we know those skills. And now we're training paraprofessionals and we're getting materials in so that those six students who have that consonant blend issue can go with a paraprofessional, go with a teacher, because we're mixing up where the kids are during the school day, and catch them up quicker, so that by third grade, they are reading at the same time. So some of this is brought on as a result of missed knowledge from COVID. Some of this is brought on from the biological makeup of the students, and now we have processes in place to make sure we can remediate those skills early enough to make sure by the time they get older, that they can catch up and hopefully minimize special education and increase their knowledge in a way like everyone else.
Thank you.
I think, this is a comment before my question, but Fred, to your point, the state hasn't changed the MCAS at all, right? So it's really important that, because third grade is the first time kids take the MCAS.
Yes, yes.
And while it doesn't necessarily count, right, it does go into state data and we compare the kids all over. And at the high school level, so these intervention, you know, while we, we are recognizing, people in education are recognizing that there are deficiencies in students for a variety of reasons, the state doesn't care, and I say that right, I mean with the MCAS?
Sure.
And I say that as a 10th grade ELE teacher. So this is awesome and great. So my question, I guess, is around the MCAS. I know there are, the state went back to, instead of waiving, you have specific windows when we are going to be administering them this year. Like last year, you had a bigger window of when you could give them. So with, particularly at the, the middle school and elementary schools, are you, are they still doing the diagnostic testing for the kids or are we trying to space it out so that they're not testing and then testing again and then testing again?
That's a great question. That's a great question. And I think it's also important that what these coaches and these interim assessments, which, you know, the timed assessments throughout the year are doing, is providing live data that's fresh, whereas an MCAS might just tell you what happened last year to a whole group of students. This is what happened today, next week, last week, and now we can design instruction from a technological standpoint to remediate as we go. But we will be, we will be following the MCAS schedules laid out. So what we're doing is we have, we're in the middle of our last six weeks of moving classes. Then we'll stay with those groups for about three weeks to just get some refresher on MCAS. I will say that the Whitman Hansen Regional School District is more interested in how we're doing individually with the data we have that's live on students and their deficits than maybe a state test, because I think it's been proven that through COVID, if you look at the College Board and, you know, how my daughter took her AP tests in her room, I think under the covers on one of them, maybe that caused some, some concern for the country. We will still do what MCAS says, but our final determination and our final year-end interim assessment will be the first week of June.
Okay.
The second week of June will be to compare that data and then we, because we are here longer, because we're here till the 23rd now, and then we will be able to make moves to say, is this something for a summer program? Is this something that's just the last data of students in school that'll then be used to start the next year? So that's how we're looking at it. Yes, we are tightening it up so we can get our MCAS review and that prep in of how to take this kind of test, but then we're going to be moving forward with, back to what it is that we know, we feel we're, is working by the data. And one last point that Hillary brought up is, yes, we start testing in third grade. However, what we're doing now, we start testing and looking at student data now in kindergarten. So that has been a growth experience of like accountability for our K1 and 2 teachers because it's been a change. That's always sort of fallen to the third grade teachers, like, oh my God, now I have tests and people look at my scores and my kids and growth. But now that starts earlier. And what that does is after you get over the initial shock and after teachers realize that that's not a gotcha, but it's how we can make students in front of us better, we know the gaps of the students, but what it also allows us to do is now look for the gaps or look for the pieces that instruction that can be improved based on the students you have in front of you. Not the students you didn't know about, but the actual students you have in front of you. And then the ability to have flexible groupings within that time is really sort of getting to know our kids in the best way possible to make changes to help them learn better. So that's the whole total goal. And it's a credit, you know, I'll give Jeff a plug, he's my boss, it's a credit to the way he's allowed us to move forward with this.
Question on the equity audit. When and who performed that and is there a report that the committee can get?
Sure. The equity audit was done. I'm blanking on Judy DeLucius Place name.
Seaside.
Seaside Consultants. Seaside Consultants was the group that did our equity audit. And what that consisted of was meetings between them and us, what we're looking for, meetings between teachers, staff, select groups of people to say, and then a transfer of information. And then basically what we did was I went into this saying, I'm not quite sure how to attack this problem. However, I think we need to come together as the Whitman Hansen Regional School District to say, so how are we doing? Do we have gaps? Do we have spaces? Do we have things to work on? So there is a report, we met with them and we debriefed and we received it probably late fall and probably just about time we got the budget. And we then said, how do we act from their action steps and summary? You know, so they give you all the positives, all the negatives, the summaries, the pieces, and you move forward from there. So that's what we're analyzing now.
Chris?
Just curious, you mentioned the name of the organization was Seaside?
Yeah.
That performed the audit. Is that something they specialize in or is that?
It's a consulting.
Other types of audits?
Yeah, so it's a consulting firm, and this consulting firm came about because they were some of the people that DESI had used and that the MSAA, which is a local organization, and MAS, which is the superintendent's organization, has used in the past to offer guidance on certain areas. So if you have a, what they do is they have, I think they have 27 people that work for them, and you sort of ask what it is you need, and then from there, they go to their cadre of people and they start to elicit questions, answers, responses, and you move forward from there. The goal was that the people that we had spoke to, Jeff, I, our administrative team, our leadership team, our student services people, really weren't sure of, when you, when we say the word equity, what does that look and then what do we need to do to move forward in it?
Yeah.
So that's pretty much how we did that.
Does this organization have certain parameters on the things that they would perform an audit? Like what kind of other things that, do you get?
So, so we've used them in the past for things like looking at how we're doing in special ed, let's say. We've used them in the past and other companies of how we're doing with our curriculum cycle. You know, we've used them in the past for different things.
So it's not just data then? They actually have interviews with people in the?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's just, so basically how it happens is you have a thing that says, so what are you looking for? We have this, we give ideas, they give us a prospectus, and then they say, if we do this, how long do you think it'll take? When do you need it back? And then they put forward with all of the things they need. And there's always hard paper, you know, electronic transfer of information and materials. And then there are interviews, and the interviews are held at every level of person. And then from there, you get a report, you talk about it, and then there's action steps. And depending on what you see, what they see, what you need to do, how you do it, we move forward. And I will say that they're a combination of retired, they have retired folks on it, educators, and they also have educators now in, at the roles that we might need help in of different districts and different places that are able to tell what best practice is and why.
So I think as soon as, as we finalize our budget, I'd like to get into this more with the committee. But since our focus, you know, and again, December to April seems to be financially focused, I'd like to transition that out and get more to the committee on, on this and where we're at.
Yeah, I just think it's pretty interesting, fascinating actually, to think of where this might be applied to other areas.
Yes. Sure.
Yeah, definitely. And it's, it's, I think it becomes, and this is sometimes is new for, I think, the Whitman Hansen Regional School District, but I think it becomes a point of, I don't think I know everything. I don't think Jeff knows everything.
Sounds like a healthy exercise.
So we try to find people to help us along the way so we can march forward in a way that that's the most helpful.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
So Donna, then we're going to move on.
Yeah, one follow-up, though. I think it's important you mentioned final, after we finalize our budget, but are there budgetary decisions that you are making in your leadership team based on this report that might be helpful?
We're still too into that? Probably not. Not, probably not for this cycle, but like George talked about curriculum pieces.
Yeah, I would say, I will offer one if I can. I mean, I could do this all day, but.
Me too.
One would be, one would be is, as we look at the glaring omissions of certain curriculum in this, in the middle school level. Now, we received positive reviews for some of our literature at the elementary level because now we have a sturdy, evidence-based, research-based program there that hits all of those things. When we get to the middle school, we really don't. So that's one of the issues that we needed. When we get to the high school and we look at some of the choice that we have in the high school, it then gets into the things to look for to make sure you have a diverse program to move forward with. So there are implications, but the implications aren't necessarily from, you need to solve this with X amount of money. It's you need to look at this in a different way. And then we use the current funds that we have to say, how do we best employ this in the most equitable economic way to affect education?
Thank you.
That's great. Thanks. Okay. And then just one more thing and goals. One of the goals was family outreach and parental increases. I had three people there yesterday at my, my parent meeting. I averaged three. I thought I had four. Four was in for a different reason. We took care of her. And I'm still out and about trying to do that. The, the feedback was really good. It's still really good, even with a couple of folks. We had a pretty good dialogue and I'm glad I'm doing it and that will be a continual every month going a different place. So I think the next meeting, I was at the high school this time, I think I'm at Duval next, and then I'm back at the high school and then I'm at Whitman Middle School to final, to finish up. So those are my goals. We'll continue to have that dialogue as we go on where we're at. Very happy with where we're at with the MTSS and, and the, and the equity piece. Annual agenda, we made a couple of adjustments to the annual agenda. OPEB was supposed to be on it. It's going to be postponed till April. We're in March already. Same thing with the audit. John's working with the auditors. And school choice, based upon our meeting today, we have to, as a district, vote to not accept school choice by June 1st. So I'm tentatively putting school choice on the April agenda. However, after policy subcommittee today, that might be postponed till May. They're doing some research with the high school as far as program, as far as school, students involved in choice, what they're actively involved in, and the whys of why they're here, and making sure Whitman Hansen students are, have the same opportunities and if not, maybe more opportunities than our school choice kids. So we're not going to necessarily, if we have, if we're prepared for, for, for April, we'll vote on it in April. If we're not, we're going to postpone it to May. I'd rather not postpone it till the absolute date that I have to notify the, the state by June 1st. Those are the pieces of changes on the annual agenda. Quick COVID update, we're, we're mask optional right now as of the return to school. I've gotten to see a lot of kids. Some kids still have masks on, some staff still have masks on. I, I did a straw poll of principals and it doesn't seem to be an issue. We're not having kids saying, why are you wearing a mask? Why are you this? I think, and I'm speaking from, from my own son, my son is in eighth grade, he wears his mask still, he's still not comfortable with the crowds. My daughter couldn't wait to take her mask off in sixth grade, and that's her comfort level. And I think that's what you're seeing in the schools. And I think, you know, it was about time from the commissioner to make that decision. I appreciate the committee saying we're going to follow DESI guidelines. We unmasked on buses moving forward, and if things change, we might just have to pivot as we go. George, do you know the date that the state's stopping the testing or the giving out the tests? Is it April, the second week of April?
I believe that is the date if they're going to stop the optimal testing is the second week of April.
So, so we have, we have very poor turnout from parents asking for these tests. I think everybody can get a test now. I mean, I have a stack at home for my kids now because we, we opted in. If the state stops, I mean, there, there's more tests out there in the FDs in both communities. They've asked us, do you need some? Said, I got plenty. So I will keep the committee and the community updated with COVID as we go, but right now we're mask optional, kids seem to be enjoying it. I have noticed things for our eighth grade trips, different venues are now becoming, you know, you don't, New York City doesn't, you don't need a shot card anymore, a vaccine card or masks anymore. So that might impact what we do for the eighth grade trips, much different than we had in October. So those, those details are to come. But quick COVID update, that's, that's where we're at. Full day K, I'm just going to go up to the podium and.
Do you want to jump down to high school?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
High school program of studies or not?
Chris?
Yes or no?
Yes, please. Yeah, I missed that.
That's how we keep the numbers.
Yep, yep. I didn't even look at the number. Dr. Jones is here. We had to pass over program of studies last meeting. He's got a brief update on the program of studies for his, for, for the committee's approval.
I believe you have the memo for the program of studies, the proposed changes to the program of studies in front of you?
We do.
I would just call your attention to a couple of things if I can. I know they're all numbered in order, but it's better if we take them in groups because they're in three major groups. If you look at number, let's see, if you look at number five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 14, 15, 16, 17, and 18, those are courses that we're recommending to take out of the program of studies for this year. They, they return next year. What we do is we rotate courses in and out to offer more choice to students for different, different, uh, different electives and things like that. That's, that's a normal everyday occurrence that we have. If we look at number one, we remove the statement in there regarding examinations and assessments because we've gotten rid of midterms and finals. So it doesn't have, it doesn't have a place in the program of studies anymore. If you look at number three and you look at number four, that's TV production two, Whitman Hansen news team. Those have both been removed because they've been revamped into different courses and integrated into different courses like video production and things like that where we're looking at TV production about media not just being about TV. So they get, and students get instruction, all different types of media and ways to advertise and, and market and things like that. Then if you look at, if you go down and look at number 11, applications of advanced algebra, that's been removed. That's, that's been taken out due to our new math pathway or the math pathway that we've been trying to do where students moving from algebra one to algebra two and pre-calc, there was an overlap where students in one of the courses wasn't quite getting enough to go into algebra two to get the others. So we had a, we had that kind of bridge course. It's taken about two years, three years, but now what's happened is we've gotten that curriculum or that pathway so that students transition from course to course and all that material gets covered in the appropriate courses. So they no longer need that bridge to fall back on. The next one is digital citizenship. That's been removed. Sounds a little odd in today's day and age, but, um, that's covered in our tech classes. That's rolled in. So, um, as we move forward, you notice that different things are getting rolled into different courses because they make more sense to be taught in, in the process of learning things and doing things. It's much like a couple of years back, we, um, got rid of computer applications when we put in our financial literacy graduation requirement because we don't need students sitting there saying, okay, open up an Excel spreadsheet. This is how you type in it. We need students learning something, saying, use that, an Excel spreadsheet to do that. And the students learn it as they go if they don't already know it when they walk in the classroom. So, um, these are just all updates. The final one I wanna call your attention to, we're pretty excited about. Excuse me. We're adding a course or we're proposing to add a course, Women Writers. Um, and this goes right back to what George was just addressing about our curriculum. Curriculum, especially in English, students need to, well, history as well, students need to be able to see through a window to other perspectives of other people, um, in a diverse age, and they need, need to be able to look into a mirror and see themselves in the literature that they're reading and things like that. So, um, this course has been added and one of the, one of the pushes for this was the success of our teen lit course that we put in. So, um, that's it. Any questions?
Fred?
Couple things. One, in removing the TV production.
Mm-hmm.
And also, I hope it's the same for news team. What they're rolling into, were those courses offered last year or are they offered this year?
They were offered last year, so we don't get signups into these other courses. It's really name changes and things like that. They're old courses that have kind of gone the way of the, the dodo, so to speak. So students don't sign up for those, so we're taking them out. It's more of a cleanup of the program of studies.
So there weren't any, there weren't any students signing up for TV production?
No, because of our newer courses, like our video production and things like that. We put the news on every afternoon on YouTube and the kids go in and we have a green room inside the classroom. They produce their own things.
Okay, so what we're offering now, supplements, it's?
It exceeds what, what was.
That's what I wanna make sure that we're not cutting anything away. I mean, we've had some very successful students, uh, come out of our halls with various, uh, employment and one of them works for a major TV station.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
Bill and No James. You know, I mean, we'd be proud of that kid, you know?
We won't, we won't cut anything away like that. It's more of the idea that.
When you, when you think about like the news team and TV production, it narrows the scope of the course so that they just focus on that where by doing this, we're more up to date on modern media techniques and methods and tools.
Say that there's a new course, Women Writers.
Mm-hmm.
Do we have a course that, that are men writers?
Uh.
Easy.
I'm asking.
But he's gonna ask the question.
No, we, we do not specifically have a course named Men Writers.
Steve?
Chris, um, on number 12, the advanced placement of, uh, computer science principles.
Yes.
Did you mention that?
I did not. That's, um, one I missed right above digital citizenship, number 12. We've gotten rid of that because nobody has signed up for it. That's an AP course in computer principles and for the longest time it's been sitting there, nobody signed up for it.
Yeah, okay.
Um, we, our other, our other AP computer science is filled up, but AP has two different types of computer sciences. Students have never signed up for that, for us to run it. So we're taking it out. If a student does express interest, we have ways of accommodating that one student.
Yeah. Wow. Very good. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for Chris? Chris, so I know, just to clarify, so this was presented to school council.
This did go to school council and was voted on and passed by the school council.
Thank you. All right. Great. Can I get a motion to approve the program of studies as presented?
For move?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Great. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks.
So briefly up on the screen, this is what's out there. I just wanna show it, show it to the public. Not gonna go into every slide and explain it all. David, Dawn, Dr. Foley, myself, put together this PowerPoint on universal full day K. A lot of that stuff came from our, our summer program or our summer conversations. But why? We all know the why. We want our parents to know and want our community, community to know the why. This isn't just, hey, by the way, we wanna provide the full day program for our kindergarten, for our five. Truly believe this and we're gonna wanna make sure our parents know this. What are the advantage of full day K over half day K? We talked about academic opportunities and social emotional opportunities. You can see through this slide that kids progressed and advanced if they have been given the opportunity to be exposed to more instruction at a number rate. Full, same thing with social emotional. We talked a lot about social emotional. One of the biggest issues we're having in social emotional, a kid returning from COVID, not knowing how to act in front of peers, in front of others. Same thing with, with half day K kids. The kids in a full day K program were routine, uh, were, uh, how to act with peers in a, in a social and academic setting, more so than students who were exposed to just a half day program. Same thing for at-risk students. Again, we, we, we try to, studies show that the impact of a full day K program will eliminate at some point, students who struggle or are best impressed those people at an earlier, at an earlier time. How many, what many Hanson kids attend full day and half day? And how do we compare? So 58% of our students attend full day K, 137, 103 in half day. Massachusetts, 96%, 96% of students are in full day K. 64, 65,000, almost 66,000 are in full day and 29, or 23, almost 4,400 in half day. So we're not in a big spot there. Same thing on this slide, our half day K enrollment, uh, with the towns that only offer half day, or offer full day K with tuition, half day K. So we are, in, in my video, I said, we're number one here. 78 kids right now are in the half day K program as of 12/9/21. Uh, and you will see some of our locals, um, Cohasset, Hanover, Duxbury, Noel. They have a very small population and candidly, when I spoke to my sub, my subgroup was, well, if Duxbury only has, Cohasset only has two students in full day K and they have 100 kids in the district, um, those parents are willing and able and, and can afford a full day K program. So it's, it wouldn't be financially sound for the school to offer that because parents are putting their students in. The closest town local to us is Hanover, uh, at 31. We still are, are above, and George talked about equity. This is, this is an issue for us because I don't know, we haven't drilled down to the why of why our students are in half day K. We haven't gone into the social, the social, uh, the socioeconomic impact of how many students can't just afford it. But we all know it's, it's the right thing to do for our students and this number needs to go down. Just a graph on enrollments, half day K versus full day K. Another graph where we're at, Conley, 44 to 29, Duval, 44 to 29, Indian Head at 68. They have three classrooms of full day K, um, and they still have 20. So we're, we're pretty across the board in our half day K enrollment, but you will see the, there are more families in, in Indian Head who are paying for that, for that service. These are, as of 20, that have adopted full day K. So I think three years ago, we were saying there's 36, 38, um, schools out there. Now there's, we're one of 24. We're one of 24 in the state, um, that don't offer, um, full day K and still charge tuition. Just locally where we're at, similar slide to before. Again, our Plymouth County School Districts, we have day K and some notes for people to just look at. What do other towns charge? This is a good slide for us. Uh, this is just tuition rates across the board, but local, get locals. So Whitman Hansen charges $32,000. I don't remember the last time we raised that. Situate, who is now a tuition rate, was at 35. Noel at 4,000, Hanover at 37.50, Hanover at 37.50, and Duxbury at 4,000. So we're the lowest with the highest attendance, uh, in half, in our half day K. I went through the school budget and talked about this. Basically, it's my budget presentation, it's online there, and that's gonna be updated as we go. We go to the numbers right now and we'll discuss some options here tonight on full day K, next steps, and we just go. People email you folks, um, let you know how they feel. We also still, of course, we have that info box for folks. It's still there. That's a general, uh, email address that I get, um, that I give forward to you so it doesn't have to be personal to a school committee member. We use that during COVID. Uh, so info@don'tworryjrsd, ask questions, support, come to meetings. We want people to be here. And then I listed the dates as we go, the May 2nd of 2022, the vote on the budget. That's what we're trying to do. And then we talked about registration because right now we are actively registering for kids, so parents have to pay that deposit if they want full day K. If we end up endorsing that in the district budget for next year, all those deposits don't be refunded until those guys. Uh, but we did have to take a, a deposit right now because we, we don't have this program in place. Why is it being presented this year? We talked about it as a school committee goal, as a superintendent goal. This is the year, we've talked about it for a long time. But this is why it's. It's in your packet, it's online. I'm talking about that. And we'll continue to talk about that as we go, um, through the budget cycle. But I just wanted you to see what this committee put together as far as information, uh, that can be distributed to the public and in the work of the summer and the subcommittee, um, and the breakout sessions and the school committee goals. So, um, and again, there, there's a seven-minute YouTube video of the superintendent sitting on a kindergarten chair, talking about this and, um, and trying to, trying to, trying to meet the, the, the younger age group on YouTube. So we'll talk about as we go. I, I think we all know the why. And I think that, thank you to Dawn and David. Dr. Foley, appreciate it for putting together those statistics, um, for us and putting together that presentation. Yes?
If I may, I have one add on that we didn't get to put on these slides, but we did talk about it last summer. So I just, and it's a funding piece, right? And are there any grant funds available to help us start a full day K program? And the state of Massachusetts offered that in 1999. That's when D E C and the state believed it was beneficial for school districts to offer that. And they offered it through 2017. So for 18 years, grant funds were available to help. They haven't been the past five years and we now know nationwide and locally, the initiative is for four-year-olds, pre, pre-kindergarten. And those grant funds, I'm sure, will be coming perhaps in the future. But we, we don't wanna, um, delay any further on this, um, cause we've missed the boat on those grant funds that were available for 18 years.
Hey, Ross.
Thank you.
Fred, yes, sir.
Perhaps this is the wrong opportunity to ask this question. It's budgetary related. I think, you know, as far as myself goes, the, the need is there. But we had asked if we knew that we were subsidizing.
John has that. So as soon as we get through that, I'll have John, he put a, a sheet together for you. He remembered that question, uh, about what we subsidize, and he's got that accurate information.
That should come off of the overall impact of the thing.
Yeah, I, I, yes. I, I believe that to be true. Okay. Thank you. And again, thanks for the support on that. Just very briefly, March 22nd, we will have people from D E C here doing our mid-cycle tier review. So special education, civil rights is audited every six years. We're in year three. You might have noticed in the express that we had to publicize that we're looking for information. Parents are, are, are asked to do a survey from D E C. That's all, uh, that's, that was out there. I wanted to make sure it was on the agenda so you folks know that we will have people from D E C looking at our civil rights and our special education. We've submitted a, 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 a ton of documents already for them to preview. They've highlighted a couple of things they wanna look at. They will be here on site doing some, some walkthroughs. So we will have people from D E C here. They will be, um, talking to Lauren and myself, uh, building administrators, special education teachers, but really doing a walkthrough. One of the targets this year, they're looking at are, are timeout rooms, making sure they're, they're not substantially separate, kids locked away in a corner. Um, that was a focus of D E C this year. And that's a piece that they just wanna see what we provide for students when they have their, their issues or their meltdown, that they have a safe, adequate space where staff is accessible to them and they're treated, you know, treated like students and not somebody that we forgot about. So that's a piece statewide, but they're gonna be looking for that. But just so that you know, uh, we're in a really good spot. I'm really not concerned about this at all, but in case, you know, you, you see people around or people say, what were those people from D E C doing here? It's our mere tier review. It'll be much more detailed. Year six, again, the six-year cycle, we're, we're halfway through. Any questions at all on that? The next piece is the, is a vote on the policy administrators contract or the policy for administrators contracts. We updated some language, um, that Chris and Fred had highlighted, uh, I believe, and it's in your packet. And, um, once approved by this, I think we can, do we have, we don't have to submit this to M A S C, do we, Michelle? This is our own policy, correct?
Yes, but we put it online.
We put it online. Right.
I thought we needed to just give it to M A S C for them to put it online.
They put it online.
Yeah, yeah. That's what, that's what, they don't have to approve it, obviously.
No.
So, so the updated policy, and I'll just read it, is prior to posting an administrator's position, the superintendent will meet with the committee, and I, do you wanna be more specific to school committee or is committee okay? I, I didn't even think of that until I just read that. The committee in executive session to determine financial parameters of the contractual package. The superintendent may, upon request of the committee, survey other school systems to determine market value salaries being paid for comparable positions in each seat, in each system. Prior to offering or executing any changes outside the parameters, uh, they will be brought back to the full committee for consideration. The length of second and subsequent contract of employment for administrators shall be in accordance with state law. Subsequent and second contract renewals for administrators shall follow the same process as described above. The contracts of the superintendent and school business manager are negotiated and awarded by the school committee in accordance with state law. In the, in this case, an administrator is an assistant or associate superintendent, director of student services, or principal.
Fred?
There would be other folks that the superintendent would negotiate a contract with.
Yes. But these are the, these are the ones that are specified under the law. Other directors are not. If you wanna include, that's worth the policy subcommittee talking about. These were the people that the policy subcommittee got when we started this, correct, Chris? Last summer? Those were specific.
And this was the scope that we identified in the first reading last time.
Correct.
Yeah.
And I'm sorry if that escaped my brain. I just, uh, you know, feel more comfortable with the all contracts that are negotiated.
So, so that would be about 30 to 40 contracts that I have, that I negotiate with. I'll do, from directors to grounds and maintenance to, um, tech services. So that, that's why we narrowed it to this scope.
Department heads perhaps?
I, I, my department heads are in Unit B of the Teachers Association.
So why, why don't we, why? Yeah, so why, why don't we do this? Can I get a motion to accept, or can I get a motion to accept this as presented? Then we can get into discussion and amendments.
For move?
Second.
Great. So, um, Fred, you had a question? If you wanna make a motion for an amendment? Hang on one second. Chris?
Yeah, I just, we did look at this and I think we have to keep in mind that we hired the superintendent to do his job, basically.
the superintendent to do his job, basically. And, you know, I just don't see a need for us to get in the weeds with all those hiring, hirings. That's my personal opinion.
Well, and I think when this was brought to us at the policy subcommittee, these were the positions specifically that we were looking at. And then last meeting, these positions were here, and it wasn't brought up that we were going to do these other ones. Right?
Yep. This is why we discuss it. Steve?
It's a little off-topic from that, but I would include school in front of committee once in that.
Yes, I agree.
And it just, and then you, the committee after.
You want a motion for an amendment wherever it says committee, do you change it to school committee?
A motion that we amend the language so that it includes school once in front of the first use of the committee.
Wherever it says committee, great. Any discussion on that? All those in favor? Great. Amended unanimous. Great. So any, so back to the now amended policy. Any additional discussion? Fred?
Where I come from, perhaps it's a matter of identifying, you know, the proper department heads. I know they're going to be with me for new facilities in the area. We're combining facilities in tech. That's going to be a pretty big hire. And I think if we, and I'm sorry, and I perhaps should have tried to state with the next policy subcommittee, but if we identify the different areas and be able to talk about the parameters, you know, because we have a lot of people, you know, for instance, and I don't think it's any secret, we pay a mileage stipend. It's a flat stipend, as opposed to paying a IRS guidance mileage for somebody. So we have employees that get X amount of dollars, and they just get that no matter what, how many miles they travel within district, et cetera. And then you, or you can have it that people put into their mileage, and they get compensated a fair rate based upon averages. As you see what's happened with gas prices, and I'm sure there's going to be an adjustment upward, people that are going to be using their own vehicles would end up probably getting more money, you know, once the IRS guidelines come out. And I think that's, and it's also a very standard business practice when you're paying people back for the use of their automobile and driving. You know, they, I think it's at like 58 or 59 cents per mile. Changes every year, you know, based upon, you know, the conditions. But, you know, I think that's the fairest way. In the past, it was argued, well, it's just a real pain for people to keep records. I mean, now, I know with my company, we use a phone app. You just put it, you sign up on your phone. Every time you get in the car and take a trip, when you stop, was that a business trip? Yes, boom. And it gives you a report at the end of the month, and it also, I believe, emails it or.
And Fred, I think what you're saying is the superintendent can certainly look into the practice of how we compensate for mileage and/or stipends. Yes, and we can talk about that if need be. But kind of bringing it back to this policy, any additional, is that fair? You'll look at that if, I mean, if you think it's something that's worthy of consideration? I know personally, I've looked at that from an employer standpoint. I'm sure you have too. It ebbs and flows. Mileage, sometimes you do the stipends, it works. Sometimes you do the mileage, it works. It's, I don't think it's, depending on the cycle, it's not going to have a material impact. But getting back to this language, any other different comments, discussion?
Other than the school part that I guess amended, this is what came out of the policy sub.
And again, not only is policy subcommittee, this was presented to the full school committee last meeting. So this is our second reading. This is not the first reading. This is the second reading of the full school committee.
Let me be very clear.
I think even, oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, so and I think the only other thing I'd add, just for clarification, if I remember the genesis of this discussion, I think Fred, you had identified, there was a, when we started this process, there was a Mass. General Law that clearly identified that the school committee had to approve, and I think it was just the contracts of the superintendent and business manager under Mass. General Law. It explicitly states that. So what the policy committee has done and what we've talked about up to this point is expanding the scope as to what's required under the law and expanding it to some additional positions. Certainly, the will of the committee will carry if we want to expand it further or not. But that's kind of where we're at and how we got here.
That's correct.
Okay. So any additional discussion? Otherwise, we're going to move to a vote. Okay. All those in favor of the policy as presented? All those against abstaining? Okay. So it passes nine, one, zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Excuse me. PTO meetings, just a general, last night, I was supposed to go to the PTO meeting at Duval, I had to cancel. Got to be here instead. So I think the next opportunity, and Chris and Chris, if you want to attend Conley on April 6th at 6:00 PM, there is no school committee meeting that night. So I told Karen I would be there at least, but I want to send that out there. I'm going to try. Dr. Foley, when's your next PTO meeting at Duval, so we don't miss you?
April 12th.
Yep. April 12th. Is that a Tuesday?
Yes.
Yes. So April 12th, Chris and Chris, if we can. And then I'm going to catch up with Mr. Dupre. He listed a couple of meetings in March, but I think we have conflicts already, and he's the last PTO for us to hit. That doesn't mean I might revisit, but we've hit Indian Head, Duval, it'll be Conley, and then Whitman Middle. And Hanson, Hanson Middle does not have a PTO as of yet.
Could you give me that date for Conley again, please?
April 6th.
Thank you.
And then you said April 12th, correct, Darlene? Awesome. Thank you. And that's part of our charge, is to get out there and see members of the community. Am I on number 12? Do you want to start off, or do you want me to start off?
I'll take the first one. So just within our budget discussion, so I, so for the school, most of the school committee members attended, there was a joint meeting of the boards of selectmen specific to discussion of the school budget. I think there were some points that were shared. I know several of you were there. For those that weren't there, I would encourage you to watch it, just to have an understanding of some of the context. In the spirit of moving forward, I think there were some takeaways in terms of process that were identified. I'm going to kind of leave it to the committee now as if anyone has anything constructive to add, because it was a fairly long discussion yesterday, and I don't really want to do it again, unless anyone else really does. If there's anything constructive to add, I kind of wanted to open that up to the committee. Otherwise, we're going to move on. Okay, great. So, Chris?
I just wanted to reiterate, I hope everyone watches it because it's pretty, you get a lot out of it, I think.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Okay, moving on.
Okay, so the last meeting, we talked a little bit about some scenarios that John and I put together. I think, John, what do we have, 11? 11 different scenarios in your handout? Because we've had to do this.
We don't have, okay. There's a handout coming, I think. Yes, or do we have?
We have.
You have it.
Oh, we do have.
Yeah, Michelle gave it to you.
Oh, Michelle gave it to you.
It's this right here.
Scenario.
Scenario.
Sorry, Michelle, I have so much stuff in front of me right now.
Sorry, Chris.
No, it's fine. I buried it, I'm sorry.
So, so, no worries at all?
It's in our piles.
I'm looking in the piles.
It was behind this one.
Behind that one? And I don't have it. I got it.
The very last, second last thing.
Got it.
So hopefully, we captured what the committee was looking for through our budget presentations, through some of the questions, use of E and D, use of ESER, trying to pull up some scenarios. So I'm just going to run through them, and then we'll take questions as, at the end, I guess, so as we go. So scenario one, half-day K, and which we presented, with costs from E and D, splitting it down the middle. And I'm just going to look at the percentage increases for you folks. So scenario one, the percentage increase to the assessment is 3.48% for Whitman. For Hanson, it's 4.35% with a general overall increase to the school budget of 2.98%. That's with full-day K, the classroom staff that Lauren had asked for in the district budget.
So when you say half, can you just explain that half kindergarten? Sorry, what is that?
So half the kindergarten costs come from E and D, so 340. That's on the original budget when we did the three scenarios. We're taking away half of the costs out of E and D. Okay?
Yep.
Scenario two, we took all the costs for full-day K out of E and D, the $740,000 out of E and D. That leaves Whitman with an assessment of 2.09%. Hanson with an assessment of 3.19% and a district overall budget of 2.98%. No kindergarten costs from E and D in FY '23. So we fully fund kindergarten in the district budget with the two added staff members that Lauren had asked for. Is a 4.87% increase to the Whitman assessment, a 5.50% increase to the Hanson assessment, and again, a 2.98% increase to the district budget. Kindergarten using E and D, $200,000 a year, one of the scenarios, can you space it out over four times? And John and I just took $200,000 a year. Okay? So in four years, committing E and D, 200 this year, next year, the year after, and the year after, it's a 4.12% increase to the district budget. For Whitman, a 4.88% increase to Hanson, and a 2.9% increase again. Then scenario five, we just eliminated full-day K and kept them at half-day K with tuition-based, adding those two teachers as we requested. It's a 2.09% increase to Whitman, a 3.19 again to Hanson, and a 1.68% increase to the budget. Scenario six, full-day K, using no E and D, and the ask of taking all of those professional salaries from ESER that we're asking for this year, the seven that are in ESER, to the budget. So it's a 6.92% increase in the Whitman assessment, a 7.2% increase to Hanson, and a 3.94% increase to the overall budget. That means we would have zero professional staff being taken out of FY '23 or FY '24 ESER monies. That was one of the asks. Scenario seven, you take scenario one, full-day K, using half of E and D for that, or three, what was it, 360 or 370, John?
340.
Three, is it 340 or 370?
370.
370, sorry. And putting the ESER III professional staff into the district budget is a 5.5% increase to the Whitman assessment, a 6.04% increase to the Hanson budget, and a 3.9% increase to the overall budget. Again, that's using $370,000 of E and D to pay for full-day K, including those staff members that are paid for, professional staff members paid for from ESER. Scenario eight, same as scenario one, taking half-day K, excuse me, half of E and D to, $370,000 in E and D to pay for full-day K, all of ESER III professional staff and paras, meaning we have no staff members in ESER in '23 or '24. It's a 6.19% increase to the Whitman, excuse me, Whitman assessment, a 7.59% increase to the Hanson assessment, a 6.59, and a 4.25% increase to the overall budget. Scenario nine is, again, using 370,000 of E and D for full-day K and taking just the BCBA and the two EL teachers, keeping the interventionists that were, that are in ESER III, putting those folks in the FY '23 budget. It's a 4.21% increase to the Whitman assessment, a 4.95% increase to the Hanson assessment, and a 3.33% increase to the overall budget. Level service for FY '23, and this was more difficult than not because of the unusual situation last year of our budget, it's a .57 increase to the Whitman assessment, a 1.94 increase to the Hanson assessment, and a .05% increase to the overall budget. That's because we were able to use or front-loaded our budget with circuit breaker money going forward. Scenario 11, full-day K, using no E and D, and I said to John, just using the BCBA's and ELs only, is a 5.61% increase to the assessment, a 6.11% increase to the Hanson assessment, and a 3.33% increase to the overall budget. Going back to those, these scenarios, and when we built our budget, the numbers that I had for assessments, again, going back to, you know, the much-talked-about Madden Report, whatever, and I said this to the select boards last night, I didn't have any basis for numbers from Hanson this year. I had a 5%, up to a 5% increase of the assessment from the town of Whitman, based on what was said last year at budget meetings and through the report that we had prior to. We tried to keep the budget to a 3% increase, providing our students with the best opportunities using federal funds and the less E and D or one-time money that we have. One thing that this committee has to understand, we're committed through ESER III to use some of that money for staffing. How we use that is up to us, but we can't, I can't buy things. Dr. Jones wants me to buy a new elevator for the high school out of ESER. I can't do that. I have to buy the grant, by the rules of the grant, I have to apply some of that to professional staff. We're proposing to do it in the most diplomatic way possible, keeping, keeping in line with that grant and making sure that we can have affordability in both of our communities as we heard last night of what they have. Just for the record, for people that weren't there last night, Mr. Heinemann said that Whitman could afford the 3.48% increase was in line with what he talked about. That was the number we talked about at the last school committee meeting. And Ms. Green mentioned a 3.0 increase for the town of Hanson. That was discussed last night. And up to, I mean, that's what Lincoln said, we're in the area. So I don't want to misquote him or whatever, but we're in that ballpark. But again, we tried to provide these assessments or these options for the committee to digest, to discuss as we move to an assessment number next week. That being said, too, and I'll remind the committee, once we set an assessment next week, we can always lower the assessments to the towns. We can't go higher than that. But we can always go lower, and I don't mean that for the committee to go lower, I just want to give you the law and make sure that you understand it and people at home understand it. We have had these budget conversations all the way up to town meeting, whether or not the towns can afford it or not, whatever, but the school committee has always set that assessment and then continued those discussions. So we tried to provide some scenarios for you, keeping the services that we feel are essential to our students and keeping up with an assessment that will help us moving forward and keep the, keep us on our five-year plan to reduce or to come up with a five-year plan for our students. So that's, I don't know if I had a question.
So before we do that, yeah, no, before we do that, so, because I think this will help us. So I know, I appreciate you being responsive and giving us, and John, the 11 scenarios and a whole host of things to consider. Given all of that, as superintendent, do you have kind of a recommended path in terms of, we're taking everything into account thus far, right? Do you have a sense of where you think we should be, or?
Yes.
Okay. Can you share that?
Scenario three.
Let's do it.
That's where I could have stood this entire time. That's full-day K with no cost to E and D, and we're still using federal funds for our coaches, and that sets that assessment of under the 5% to the town of Whitman that we've talked about in the past, and the 5.5 to the town of Hanson. One other item that I'll share is I did some conversation, or I did a survey of our staff members. I will have five Unit A members retiring next year through attrition. I will have three Unit A members in '24 that we can use to supplement some of these people from ESER. I have zero Unit A retirements in '25. I have five retirements, excuse me, four retirements in 2026, and then eight retirements in Unit A in 2027. Just so the committee has an idea of where people are going to be going, and I also have three people in Unit A that said, "Yeah, I'm retiring, I just don't know in the next five years where they be, where they are." And that attrition piece is important for this committee, especially in certain areas. If it's an elementary teacher that's going to retire, or two, they're usually at a higher cost. I can replace them and then fund another teacher's salary out of that. So through attrition, we can start to buy back some of those folks in ESER. And also for the committee, using ESER funds for our coaches and for this BCBA and for these two ELs. These two ELs wouldn't have been on our horizon in October this year. But because we had a bubble come up, I need them. I don't know if that bubble's going to go away, and I can't give you a responsible answer to say, "I want to put them in the district budget," because they could go away in two years if we lower our numbers in EL. And the BCBA piece, because we've seen an uptick in behaviors at all of our buildings, we're asking for that additional person. We had contracted service for that BCBA in the past. We'd like to get them on staff, but that doesn't mean in the next two years, we don't reallocate those funds based upon the needs of our students. BCBA, special education, again, for behaviors, we've seen the uptick. ESER money is perfect for this because it addresses what we've seen post-COVID. And again, we're committed to using ESER funds for staff members. George reminded me today, three times, ESER money is for post-COVID people, and we need to continue to do that. I think our important piece is, as he talked about MTSS today, and it's really important, we've never had these positions, that we implement them over time, but we also might have to readjust how we use them through attrition or a better model. We kind of threw it in, it's working, and then, being good administrators, we evaluate as we go. So if you want that recommendation from the superintendent, S3, or scenario three, is what I think is important for our district. It was our goal this year. We can afford it, and I don't know, I heard different things from the towns, but that would be my recommendation tonight.
So going to open it up to the committee, I would ask if the committee is so inclined, if we could start with questions and then we'll move to comments? So I'd like to give everyone an opportunity to get their questions asked, and then we'll give everyone an opportunity, we can stay the evening, if anyone's so inclined, to do as many comments as people want. But can we do it that way? Just because it'll be easier, I think, to get the questions, opposed to questions and comments and so on and so forth. So can we start with questions? So Fred, I got your hand first. Question?
Bussin, I've received a few phone calls about the way I've received a few phone calls about the way we're applying our formula for mandated busing and how it affects the cost of non-mandated busing.
Yes.
I believe you're aware of.
Oh, yeah. Yes, I am. And actually, it's another piece that we're going to talk about today. So Budget Subcommittee, I don't want to step on.
No, that was the next update, so we might as well just do the Budget Subcommittee update now, right, at this point. So to answer that question, so, yeah, so there was some busing analysis done from Sean Keane, who's here tonight, and John Galvin. And basically, what they are, what they were looking at was that there is a way to potentially change how we've calculated our mandated and non-mandated busing costs that would potentially allow us as a district to seek greater relief from the state in terms of aggregating the way we do the mandated busing costs. So if that was the case, it would be a scenario where, by changing the analysis, the mandated busing costs would go up, the state reimbursement would go up, and the services would remain unchanged. So that is, that was presented at the last Budget Subcommittee meeting. Sean had reached out and asked if he could do that. We had the meeting, and we have another meeting tomorrow morning at 8:30 to continue that conversation to see how it works. So that would be an advantageous impact to the budget and potentially both towns. So that's kind of where that's at, but that's, nothing here is reflected in the budget because we're not there yet.
Right. That's what I was just going to ask. Do you have an idea about what you're talking about cost savings? I mean, like 100,000 or?
Not yet, because I think we've charged, and we're not there, right? I think we've charged John with making sure that we feel comfortable with actually the way we would do the filing with the state. So it would be premature to say that at this.
Because that could certainly help the budget, but we're not certifying it tonight.
Well, and it's important because there's also a difference between, because of the reimbursement cycle.
Yes.
If we were to make the change now, it doesn't necessarily mean it would impact this budget, it might impact FY24.
But that helps with our five years.
It helps with the five year, it still could have an impact, but we're not there yet. And so that's what is being worked through presently.
All right.
So, and we thank Sean and John for bringing that to our attention. Certainly, anyone that wants to present a thought that can help the district and the towns, we welcome. So that was where we're at, was busing.
Does that answer that question, Fred?
Yep.
Other questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
Just to clarify, so the, in Scenario 3, the coaches would still be paid with ESER funds, the BCBA and the ELs that were proposed, those new staff would also be paid through ESER funds, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Other, I'm going to come back to you, Fred, unless anyone.
It's actually a follow-up to Hillary.
Sure, I don't see anyone else's hand raised, go.
Just to reiterate, how much of the ESER funds are being utilized in Scenario 3?
John, George, you have it, I would assume another $770,000, it's seven positions, depending on how much people are getting paid, but it's, we're asking for a secondary math interventionist, I'm asking for a BCBA, two ELs, and there's currently three other interventionists or coaches in that fund. So I think eight people.
Eight people, and is, how much is in ESER 2?
ESER 2's gone at the end of this year.
No, no, 2.3.
2.3 in ESER 3. 2 point?
That's ESER 3.
That's ESER 3. Correct. And again, the stipulation, too, is it has to be used for certain things, and we have to use a certain chunk for mental health, social, emotional, summer, learning loss, and people. And I think that's the key piece for, I think, folks out there, when they rolled out ESER 3, and George, I'll grab you in a minute, but when they rolled out ESER 3 last February, we thought we hit a windfall because it was like, here's $2.3 million for your district, and then in June, they came up with a set of parameters for us to do. We had to survey our community, and our community was like, this is what we want, we want learning loss, we want to make sure we have some summer programs. I know some folks said, hey, rebuild this, rebuild that. We can use pieces, if George can be so, so smart, to tie it to that. And we've done that in certain areas, but it has to be COVID-related. It just can't be, hey, by the way, and again, we're having real issues with the high school elevator, and Dr. Jones said, can't you use ESER money to fix that? And we actually thought about that, like, hey, we, we, and we can't, we have to be ethical about how we use the funds.
What about the chiller ventilation?
That is a potential, I know, but it has to, I don't know that, you know what I mean?
Yeah, so.
It's.
If I could, ESER 3 was written with many different parameters, and it was wide-reaching. However, when it talks about, you have to put 20% to learning loss, and you have to put that, and then X amount to mental health issues, there's actually the formula when you fill out that grant that tallies not only what it is, the total amount spent, but that also tallies the amount spent to address those key pieces that you have to do. When it comes to things like the chiller or events that are, things that you want to do that exceed procurement, and in this case, procurement on the ESER grant is about $30,000, you would have had to have all of those things done previous to getting the grant approved. So before the grant was approved the first time. So where we went with the combination of humans, and then where we went with the combination of $25,000 in certain areas for things like maintenance, for things like Chromebook keypad, Chromebook parts, or things like more air ventilation for the system that we currently have now, that was all accepted. So in getting the grant, there are parameters of which we can work from when we have choice, but there are also parameters that would be very difficult to do.
Yeah, I want to hold on, Fred, before we go to you. Any other questions?
Yeah, just to double-check, the E and D balance is still 1.8?
1.8, so we're asking in this budget to spend $400,000 for Chromebooks.
Right.
1.25 to pay off the water bill and be done, and then up to the committee. So really, the 400 is a real ask, I need those Chromebooks using one-time funds, and we're coming up with a plan to, our next cycle will be 2026 and then 2029. So we're working in Budget Subcommittee to figure that out, but I do need, we're going to have Chromebooks offline in June, and we need it in September. So I'm looking at a $400,000 expenditure of one-time funds from that 1.8 for Chrome, 1.25 to pay off the water bill. Technically, we don't have, we only have to pay 65 of it, but John's recommendation is using one-time funds to get rid of that, and then depending on the committee, what you want to use for E and D. So if you use nothing for full day K, you still have a substantial balance, something we haven't seen ever.
Okay, so that would be about 1.3 million.
Yes.
And just to repeat what we've said before, Mass General Law says that a regional school district can maintain E and D balance up to 5% of its operating budget.
That's correct.
So that's, you know, 5% of 50 million would be 2.5 million, and we're above that, so 2.5. So we, if that was to be used for Chromebooks and that water bill, we're about half of what we could maintain. And then just piggybacking on the elevator repair issue, that conceivably could be an E and D repair expense. We could, we could fund that since we can't out of ESER, you know? So those are the things that I think of in keeping an E and D balance, right? That's a repair that, or the alternative to that elevator is going to our towns and asking for it to be a capital item. So we could manage that E and D responsibly and take care of items that we, thank you.
Fred?
I would argue that the repair of the elevator, depending upon, as long as it meets the threshold, will be a capital expense to the towns, you know, to be divided up appropriately. I mean, if we take it out of E and D, it's almost the same thing because the money belongs to both towns anyways, but I would argue that. And I know we have some very substantial capital needs right now. You know, maybe we can utilize some funds, and, I mean, some funds to help out the towns with what our capital requests are, you know, but that's a sudden and.
Yes, right. We're repairing it now, but this, this is, it's become very problematic in the past year and a half. And it is impacting our students who have physical limitations and our staff who have physical limitations. We were down Friday afternoon till this morning, and we've had to have classes in the library, classes in the Performing Arts Center, students in the office taking tests. It's not a good, good situation. So we need to really dive deep, and I don't want to branch off. I'll give you a report on that at the next Facility Subcommittee meeting where we're at. I don't have all the information, I just know it's becoming problematic.
So other questions on the budget? Otherwise, we can transition to comments on the budget if anyone has any.
And this might be like what you guys are working on in Budget Subcommittee, but, you know, George, we just spent, I don't know, 15 minutes talking about the coaches and the interventions and things like that, so, you know, and it probably isn't another document, but with this, paying, using ESER funds to pay for staff, you know, and I did express that concern at the last meeting, just making sure that there's some sort of plan where if in, if next year, the EL bubble was not a bubble, and we actually need these, these staff members, we need to find a way to keep them so that we're not losing other staff members, right? So, and I, I think that that, I hope that that is something that is on people's radar, right? Because I do, you know, I just, I think that that is certainly a concern, that is a concern that I have, so.
Can I just comment?
Yeah, yeah. That was my question.
It's on the forefront?
Okay.
And my problem, and it, as much as I can be open, I don't know what we're going to need after next year, because we haven't had a real year for two and a half years. So I'm really struggling to say, this is, we all need this and throw it into the budget because I don't know what's going to come out. And then, and that's a true assessment of where we're at. Our kids are better today than they were six months ago, but we don't, I want to see where we're at, and the FY24 budget is going to be the one that I can really truly say, these are our needs going forward for our kids. We're still in, we're still in triage mode.
So as a, as a comment, sorry, Beth, real quick, so as a comment just to build on that, right? So I think if we're saying, hey, we're going to use one-time money to fund these positions in the FY23 budget, then the understanding is, that's how we're funding those positions, which means if we don't have the one-time money in the future, then there is no assurance we're going to have those positions. And if we do need those positions, then we're going to have to really think about the operating budget going forward to figure out how it works, right? So, but at the same time, you're also in a bind because where ESER is different perhaps than other aid programs, is there's a specific requirement to hire staff.
Right.
So we can't just not spend it on staffing. It's just, I think, having that recognition that when we look at that five-year plan, if we're spending $700,000 on these positions, we all have to understand, that's how we're paying for those positions. So something's going to have to give in the future. It can't just be we're going to find $700,000. So as long as we all go into it with that understanding, I think it's better. Beth, and then Fred.
Yeah, my question is on Scenario 4, Jeff.
Yep.
Okay, so that's basically the same as 3, except we've taken $200,000 for.
$200,000, yes.
$200,000.
So we're committing to, to that program and then chunking it.
But, but keeping everything else as is, the full day K, all those people in ESER and things like that.
If the ESER people stay there, yes. It's just paying for full day K in a different way.
And just to lower the assessment to the two towns.
Correct.
Yep.
Fred?
And that'd be 800,000 in totality.
Yes.
But ESER 3, we have three years to spend it.
We have to be done by September of '24, correct? We can earmark those people for that fiscal '25 budget, correct? But.
It's a federal, it's a federal.
John, up to the mic, please, thanks.
It's the federal calendar, so we can do things with that money until September 30th of 2024.
Okay.
So, we spend the money now, evaluate next year, people are still needed, we have that, but the plan could be, there may not be money in '24. You know, and we go into it with our eyes wide open, but I think that there's a definite and definitive remediation need. You know, that's what the money's for, and we owe it to the kids.
Correct.
You know, to be able to give them every opportunity to catch up and to prosper as much as they can.
And I just want to be clear that there are different avenues that we're exploring, like when Jeff talks about the retirement aspect and attrition. But let's say, and I'm not sitting here, I'm sitting here saying, educationally, I do believe that these positions will have to remain, because that's how students learn, and they learn differently. I'm also saying, though, is that if there is no money to be had, and we still need this, then there's the educational philosophical discussion that has to take place that says, is 17 in a class at Indian Head in second grade better than 22 in a class with an intervention program? Because then what you'd be looking at is analyzing the existing budget that you have in order to make sure and really be clear-cut on the priorities that you need. So there are ways to do this and keep it if the data shows and if the reality of the next two years shows that this is something that needs to be done.
Okay. Other comments? So I think the only other thing that I'd like to do, Sean, come on up, we'll give you a minute and a second, we'll give you a minute in a second. You know, we did hear from the towns, and Jeff shared kind of what they gave us as an indicator. The one thing I'd be interested in understanding, because I can't really find it anywhere, is what are the towns' budget increases projected year-over-year, notwithstanding the schools? Because I'd like to understand what the town budgets look like, right? Just as a basis of comparison. So, you know, we're looking at roughly a 2.98% year-over-year budget increase. I'd like to understand what the towns are looking at for budget increases, because to me, I'm not saying it has to be precise, and I'm not saying it has to be exactly equal, but there should be a general equity, for example, of, you know, what are the other, what is the rest of the town doing in terms of a year-over-year budget increase? So if the committee's okay with it, I would like to send an email to Lincoln and to Lisa and just say, hey, can you, can you get us that? Because I, for me personally, I'd like to understand that. I'd like to understand where the towns are. I think one of the things we tried to cover last night, and you can see it very well articulated here, is a 3% increase in our budget if we're not using E and D, and I'm not advocating anything, I'm just doing the math right now. If you look at Scenario 3, and we look at a 2.9%, 2.98% budget increase, that translates to a 5.5% increase for Hanson and a 4.87% increase for Whitman. So you can almost see that correlation between, it's almost double, right? What our increase is, that's going to translate to the assessment. So I think just kind of understanding where the towns are, to me, it's a data point I'd like to understand, but I'd be looking for the committee to okay that email going out. Is anyone object to that?
Here's your partnership, sounds good.
Okay. Thank you. Chris, and then Sean.
Awesome.
Okay, Sean, go ahead.
Yeah, just one more layer, I think, to consider would be, or in a question that I have, it was brought up a little bit at the Budget Subcommittee meeting, but I'm not advocating for the use of one-time funds. I think that's a smart financial decision to not do that. That being said, if you can use some one-time funds this year and work it into your budget over the next five years in a sustainable way, that does address the sustainability issue. You know what I mean? If sustaining, if creating a sustainable budget over the next five years is one of your goals, it doesn't mean it necessarily has to be done right now this year. If you could potentially use some one-time funds to address certain needs and then work it out, kind of like work out the kinks over the next year or so, then to me, that does, I'm not necessarily, you want to think it through more, but I think it does address the sustainability issue, and it may create more, open up more options for you if it, if that's, if that's helpful, if that makes sense, you know? So creating some assumptions, using potentially some one-time funds to kind of get the program up and running, say, full day K and some of the interventionists, and then working out some of the kinks over the five, over the five years with attrition and some of the stuff that you had talked about, and maybe some other, in some other areas, that could maybe open up the option to use that this year, if that makes sense.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. Actually, I want to ask Steve. Steve's been quiet, so, Steve, then you, and then I.
Well, you know, the thing with John, Gavin, and Sean, what they presented to us, I thought was just absolutely mind-blowing and excellent at the same time. It was perfect, it was spot-on, and I know we're not talking about the busing piece right now, but just saying we got that bump by going forward with that plan, you know, it's a perfect plan, whatever, and we get that bump. We do have, in a way, an obligation to take advantage of these one-time funds. What Jeff's saying, and I don't know if I've heard this before, maybe I have, but we're oblig, I know we weren't oblig, we can't use it for certain things, but what we can and are obligated to do is use it on staffing. Well, this is probably the only way, unless there's another option in anyone's mind of how to use that on staffing. You know what I mean? Things could even out for us after, with what Sean and John were presenting, things could even out with, for us in FY24 with that whole, I want to call it the busing bump. I don't know, I don't know, you know? But we get closer and closer to almost knowing all of our options, and one of the, John S. here, one of his presentations last week was really kind of showing us with like a $2 million E and D in X number of years, and I don't want to, you know, get everyone excited or anything, it was just exciting to see. It definitely puts us in a good way. So it's almost like we're getting there, we're fitting the pieces together.
Okay. Thank you, Steve. And then, which one of you is?
Go ahead, Don.
Don, thank you, and then Hillary.
So, I, I'd like to hear some talk around our goals, and I know our five-year plan is important, and I think the state is helping us out with the Student Opportunity Act 2 in directing us to what our goal should be. I think. Uh, I think our goal should be, how do we get more state aid, too? Cause we've always said that. It's flat, we've talked about hold harmless. Um, and what the state, in, in this, this graph, this is, uh, Document 18, I know you probably don't have it with you, but this is the one that talks about the percentage of our state aid right now, our chapter 70. Um, it's 44% of our budget, um, and our operating assessments locally from the towns is 51%.
There we go.
There you go.
51% operating assessments. In the Student Opportunity Act in chapter 70, it talks about the target share, the target that education funding should be is that your local assessments should be 51, 59% of your operating budget, and that your state aid piece should be 41% of your operating budget. So, that's, that's a, a number that comes from DESI, it comes from the state, and that really should be part of our goal, part of what we should be looking at. Um, and again, we talked about, we're not getting any more state aid, but how do we? Um, the, I, I looked at Bridgewater-Ranham, they were only 100,000 in hold harmless this year, FY22. The Student Opportunity Act with those changes in the metrics, they're getting 4.2 million dollars at Bridgewater-Ranham, projected for the FY23 budget. They had some increasing enrollment, we're not seeing that, so I'd love to have discussions, you know, in the next few months or whenever about how do we maintain our enrollment, right? And, and one thing, I think this, this recommendation by Superintendent Number Three does that in initiating full-day kindergarten. It does now increase our enrollment a little bit by counting students from half-day kindergarten to full day.
Thank you. Lori?
Um, I think that one of the things, um, that came up a few meetings ago was that with full-day K, because of the hold harmless, we will not be reimbursed with chapter 70 funds for those students. Is that act, am I?
Yes.
Okay. So, to me, using one-time funds to pay for full-day K doesn't make sense if we're not going to be reimbursed, right? And I think I had said this at a previous meeting where you might be able to offer a coach, and then the next year be like, oh, we can't pay that, and it might not, there's not, you can't offer full-day K, and then the next year be like, sorry, we can't pay for that, we have to pull it out, right? So, I think that that is certainly something to consider when looking at what we're gonna spend our one-time funds on, and considering what the parameters of ESAR is, it makes the most sense, you know, I, I don't think it's a good idea to spend E and D on full-day K, um, at all. And especially when we will not receive any chapter 70 increases or reimbursements for those students, um, not a good move, so.
It helps us get a little closer, closes that gap a little bit of that hold harmless, right? But we will not recognize a single dollar.
We're not gonna get any financial benefit, and then we're just gonna be back at square one, right? So, that's, that's all.
Yeah, and we'll share a little bit of an update on that. They came out of budget subcommittee before we're done, but we got people stacked up, so I wanna get to, um, Rosemary's been waiting a while, but Fred, go quick.
Uh, real quick. E and D, I'm very afraid to spend that at all, other than if we use it to hit capital items. One-time expenses, Chromebooks, I think it's a wonderful way of buying Chromebooks, uh, very appropriate. As far as the ESAR monies for the coaches, we spend it, and then we assess next year. We may need all of them, we may only need some of them, but we're not gonna know, and that's what this money is for. We gotta spend it, you know? That's what it's for. And with the mindset that we may have, you know, geez, I'm sorry, we kinda fit this into the budget, but we're also, uh, facing declining enrollment, you know, and that doesn't help us with hold harmless at all. You know, that's gonna be a big factor in the future, so, I mean, we're stuck with the hold harmless unfortunately for a while. MLCs are going up, but I don't know if it'll ever be enough of an impact for us.
Rosemary, thank you for waiting.
Thank you, Rosemary Conley, Whitman Mass, 405 Franklin. It is hard to sustain something in debt. You ask anybody, oh, you have this budget, you're, if you're in debt.
Can you speak up a little?
I said, you can't sustain something when you are in debt. The target share is a real number. It's the number for the average amount to educate a child. The reason your money, your aid is going into your hold harmless, it is hold harmless debt. And until you pay it off, we won't, we won't see much aid. We'll see some, but not as much. So, the way you have to think about it is, how do we get out of debt? And how much are we losing, say, three and a half about is what I'm kinda calculating, in aid when we are not out of this debt? That's the mindset. And if you don't have that mindset, you will have a mindset of erosion and a continuation of erosion and loss of students, because you won't be able to provide the services needed. So, the state gives a real number. It is target share, it has the name, target, you know? And that's a real number, it's calculated by our wealth, it is a formula that goes with it, so we know the towns can afford this because it's been calculated by our, our equalized value, how much we can pull from, from the towns. Chapter 70 is a very valid, good formula. The new, um, formula actually gives a lot more aid back, so if we think differently and we think about how we service these kids, we can get out of debt and start to create that real state sustainability. And I hope people think just a little differently here. Thank you.
Thank you. Justin?
Thanks, guys. Um, first, I think I can answer, at least sort of answer one of Chris's questions from earlier. Uh, the town, uh, general budget's going up about 3.2% with the current projection. Um, that's with a placeholder of the schools at a 2.5% assessment, we know it's gonna be somewhere north of that probably. Um, so if scenario one, it's about 3.5%, the town's general budget will increase about 3.5%. It's, it's more or less.
And Justin, I think specifically what I'm asking is to kinda, at least this is how I'm thinking of it, to normalize for the schools, taking the schools out of that, right? So, if you, if you take the schools out of, out of the equation, then what, what does that percentage look like? Cause then, like, we're, we have our own thing that's obviously gonna, but I'm kinda, so that's still helpful, but that's kinda what I'm asking.
Yeah, you should probably talk to the town administrators to get the exact number, but that's.
But thank you.
Roughly where we are. Um, but I'm glad we've had a lot of hold harmless conversations, sounds like you may talk about it a little bit.
Yes.
More soon. Uh, to kinda marry what Sean, Don, and Hillary were saying, I, I do see a potential opportunity if we can project when, you know, the first year of the Student Opportunity Act, we, we reduced that hold harmless level by about a million and a half. I don't know if that's the change to the statutory method or, or Student Opportunity Act, but somewhere in there, it's, it's making a difference. Um, full-day K would help, you know, close that gap, and Bridgewater-Ranham seeing a huge increase in state aid as a result, that could be the end of our one-time revenue solution. Like, I, I would not be opposed to using one-time revenue to try to get out of this hole we're in, so, that's it.
Yeah, so, so I have this update a little later, might as well give it now. So, um, sorry. So, basically, um, one of the things we talked about as a, as a school committee was, hey, hold harmless, let's try and understand it. So, that was something that we took away to the budget subcommittee. Um, Jeff and John set up a conversation with DESI.
Rob O'Donnell.
Uh, Rob O'Donnell and DESI, and we went through hold harmless. Um, we spent an hour, it was extremely informative, there was a lot of different, um, things that I got out of that. So, what we're gonna do, Michelle's already there, or it's gonna be, link? It will be very soon. So, we asked them to record it, because the whole reason we did this was we wanted to make sure that, A, the school committee could see it in-depth. So, you'll hear the questions that we asked, you'll hear the responses, you'll see the data, and then we'll certainly put it on the website so it's available for the public. So, what I think we talked about, we, we haven't had a chance to even talk about it as a budget subcommittee, because we literally posted the meeting just to that end. Um, but I think what we'd probably like to do is just get that to everyone, someone like you, Justin, Sean, Rosemary, watch it, it's very informative, the school committee, watch it, and then we'll put it back on the agenda and let's have this conversation so that we all have the same information. But I think that was a, that was a clear takeaway for us, and I won't, I, I think Jeff, Jeff and I talked about it, we won't spoil it for you, we'll let you watch it. Everyone can come armed to the same place, and then we'll have that conversation. So, um, there was a lot of different things in there about variables and Student Opportunity Act and the like, so, hopefully that's a good tease and you'll all watch it. Um, like I said, I don't, I feel uncomfortable biasing, like, this is what I heard and got out of it, and I know we talked about that as well. So, we'll get that posted and we'll get it on the agenda, and we can have a, we also, I think, even asked him to, uh, be open-minded to maybe coming back after we've all watched it and asking kinda the next layer of questions. So, that's something that we've committed to try and hopefully figure out a way, I just, I'm not sure there's a, gonna be an easy way quickly, but, um, but yeah, so.
Thanks.
Hopefully that helps everyone, and thank you for asking, Justin.
Do you wanna go right to you?
So, before, I think before we leave, yeah?
Can I just piggyback in, having information can never hurt.
Yeah.
I can appreciate you wanting to get the information from the towns. I just wanna, my personal perspective is that as long as the towns are treating us decent, I really don't care what police get, or fire get, or DPW, or any other department, um, our budget shouldn't affect them. I don't think that if the schools have a need that is greater than what the towns can afford, as long as the towns not taking away from us and they're distributing equally, then, uh, anybody should lose their job or have to cut back. That's my own personal. Our budget shouldn't affect police, fire, et cetera. You know, providing that, everything's on an equal playing field.
Okay. Thanks for sharing your.
Um, just wanna follow up with Fred, um, through you, Chris. I, I think that's the first time I've heard Fred talk about anything close to not wanting more information. Some observation.
Okay.
That's it. Thank you.
All right. Um, so to kinda wrap up on budget, cause I think we can get to wrap up on budget, cause so, next meeting, we're putting budget on the agenda and we really need to look to
Vote in a second.
To vote it. Um, a week from tonight.
A week from tonight.
And that's the only thing on it.
Um, we might have a couple other minor things on the agenda, there's a couple other updates, but that will be the primary reason for the meeting. Um, there's at least one update that we have to share, we just got the update, too late to post it, so, um, so what I, what I would suggest is Jeff, maybe you come prepared to lead with your initial thought here, um, but I'd also ask, can we also have kinda that ESAR sheet to accompany it? And an updated kinda five-year plan, so we can kinda see how, when we do this, it all kinda plays together?
Sure.
Um, and then, and then we should be prepared to set an assessment, um, with the understanding that we know what it is, we know kinda what we're spending for ESAR, we know how that's gonna maybe look going forward, and we go from there. So, does that work for everyone?
Absolutely.
Okay, great.
Do you wanna talk five-year plan?
And five-year plan, we might as well. Um, so, I had three, I had three updates that I was gonna do as part of budget on behalf of the budget subcommittee that I think were relevant to the budget discussion. So, the first one was bussing, we covered that. The second one was DESI, we covered that. Um, the third one is, we continue to work through that five-year plan. So, I think by the time we meet, some of that interplay from what we've talked about and what we've looked at, but again, um, as we look forward, I think one of the things that's being highlighted is, you know, the lack of state aid. And so, the lack of state aid causes that significant impact on the towns. Now, we can argue about whether there should be impact or shouldn't, the reality is.
It does.
Right? If we need a 3% increase and we're gonna get $120,000 from the state, then it's gonna fall on the town. So, you know, building that plan is gonna be important. I would encourage all of the stakeholders to listen to what we're saying, because some of the feedback we've gotten is timeliness around sharing what we think the numbers are gonna be, and as a personal opinion, I don't think the issue is the timing, I think the issue is gonna be the numbers. So, you know, as we go through that five-year plan, I think there'll be some pretty clear, like, this is what it's gonna look like. Um, but again, you know, kinda where we were going, it's gonna be very difficult to whether it's a town, or whether it's a school district, or whether it's a business, it's gonna be very difficult to operate in an environment where you're not talking 2% to 3% budget increases year-over-year. Like, I haven't, I haven't experienced it. In my professional career, on other boards I'm on, like, I haven't seen budgets not incre, you know, maybe there's a year, something happens, great, you can hold it flat, but it's, you're looking at a consistent 2% or 3% increase year-over-year, over-year. So, that's where we're all gonna have to try and figure out as we move forward, so.
Okay.
Um, but that's kinda, we're working through that with the budget subcommittee, I think those discussions have been good. We'll share that through the superintendent when we meet next time.
Okay.
Next.
We'll just, John, you're up. Monthly report, and then just to talk about ban.
Okay, um, excuse me, thank you.
It's the monthly report. You've been quiet for a long time, so speak up. I haven't heard you tonight.
Uh, the, the monthly report is, uh, through February, it's the one that looks like this. Um, the first page is the revenues, uh, we're eight months in now, so, um, the way you read this report is, we had on page one, $56,797,579,40 is the budget, and the year-to-date actual, uh, what we've received so far is $40,251,175,73, or about 70% of, of what we had budgeted. Um, just for, and I know we're gonna be, I'm gonna be going more into the budget, um, on the quarters, so next month there'll be more, but, um, around now, you can start to look at the revenues and try to project out in your head what, what might or might not happen for the rest of the year. Um, and just for a, an easy, quick one, um, everything above Hanson Capital Building and above on the revenue, you can assume that we're going to get that money. Um, and if you, again, this is the lens of thinking about E and D. How do you add E and D? Uh, that's what, kinda what I do all day unfortunately is, how, how can we increase E and D? Uh, the way, most of the way, the, the two ways that you can, uh, the biggest ways to, um, increase E and D are to get more revenues in than you've, than you budgeted, or to spend less than you budgeted. So, this is the revenue side of it. Um, everything north of Hanson Capital Building will not be a hit to, it will not help E and D, uh, because with, those are monies that we've assessed and we've, they're in the budget, we're not gonna get any more than we were assessed. Um, south of Hanson Capital Building, Medicaid reimbursement, all the way down, those are the ones that, um, if we get more than we're, we've budgeted, um, that would add to, at the end of the year would add to E and D. So, again, uh, more to come on that, but that's one, a quick way to look at that. Um, and we could talk about it more next time. Uh, next is the expenditures, again, through February, uh, page 19, the, sorry, page 18, the amount, we've spent $35,515 so far, um, there's still $17 million available with 4.7 million in encumbrances. Um, again, I'm moving quickly, cause this is a monthly report you've seen before, and, um, and just some other quick reports that, again, will be, I'll go into further detail on the quarters or, in March. Um, the next one is the actual comparison, that's, that's this one, it has a balance, I'm sorry, it's the one that says the balance sheet at the top.
What's its title?
It is Whitman-Hanson Regional School District, fiscal year '21 to '22, actual comparisons as of 2/28/22. Um, the, the top part is the balance sheet, the second part is the revenue expenditure comparison to last year through February, and then down below is a fund balance activity comparison. Um, I, I think at the last meeting, uh, last month, I, I kinda pointed it out at the top in the balance sheet comparison, uh, if you look in the, where the, um, where the, what should be yellow, I don't know if you have a color copy or not, but it's, uh, 896,961 for reserve for expenditures, that was assuming scenario one in the earlier discussion. Again, if that, I didn't know what number, that's the number that's in there for right now. And again, E and D is just, uh, what it would be if the year ended in February. Of course, the year does not end in February, but it's just a snapshot in time of where we are. And if you look closely on the fund equities, it is up $211,000. Not meaningful, not that meaningful in February, but a lot meaning, more meaningful than October, let's say. Revenues and expenditures, again with the comparisons, um, that I can go into it if you have any questions on that. Um, the second, the, sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, I'm a little behind, I think, but, um, on the first page we're looking at now, could you just kind of explain the 919110?
Oh, Chris is on it.
Tuition and school tuition to other schools?
First page you were talking.
Yep.
Okay, so that's the next one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. That, that's, that was coming next. That's just a comparison between the two, um, year-to-year based on function, but DESI function. So 91, 9110, is that what he said?
Yeah.
The tuition to mass schools? Maybe that's, I could ask you, Jeff, like, is that?
9100.
Going out?
That's our, our district, yes.
Our district. And that, that encompasses?
Private, no, uh, John, privates aren't in there, are they? Is it just collaboratives and, uh, and residentials? Or is it private as well?
It's, uh, just, just tuition to other schools, not privates. Uh, sped aid assessment, it's on page 18 of the larger document. And, uh, then sped tuition, sped tuition to other schools. That's the ninety, that was 9100.
Yeah. So that's, that's our tuitions that go out. And you also had a question on 9110?
I, no, I have a question on what he was talking about before.
Yep.
Um, so the 86960, that's when you put for reserve for expenditures, that's if we do half of, um, the full day and the chromebooks and the water belt.
Yes. And a, a small amount of, of bond premium that would have to be set aside. Um, I think it's 1,600 something.
Okay, thank you. Just right here.
Chris, did John answer your question?
I think I'm good.
Okay.
Thank you. I, I can follow up later, thanks.
And, and.
I don't want to bog you down.
You can ask me.
Yeah, thank you.
So, and then the, the final document on the budget is, um, the, uh, every other fund other than the general fund, what the balance is, the, the, the activity in every fund. Uh, the title of that is Revenue and Expenditure Schedule As of 2/28. And it's three pages long, so you've seen this every month. It's just every other fund other than that. Circuit breakers on there. Nothing's changed in that yet, because that comes on the quarters.
What's the title of that?
It says, uh, it's District Revenue and Expenditure Schedule As of 2/28. So it's this one. It has every fund, it starts with 2104 Fiscal Year '22 Financial Literacy. Next one is Esser one.
It's got the fund numbers down the left, right?
Deficits, right?
No. It, it has, uh, the left-hand column is the fund number and then the fund name. No?
Fund, not fun.
You want mine?
I just can't.
Got it?
He has a packet.
I can have to go to this. No, it's cool.
It's near the back, it's near the back.
Yeah. It's in the cloud.
It's in the cloud.
Any other questions or, and that's pretty much the standard budget?
Yep.
Um, and then the, if no other questions, what was the, the next one? I don't have the agenda in front of me. It was the, uh, was the ban?
Talk about the ban.
The ban.
I know Dawn had asked about ban a couple weeks, or a couple months ago.
So capital costs are, are assessed to the towns based on their actual costs. Um, one thing that is assessed as a regular expense is the cost of the financial advisor to place bans, bond anticipation notes or bonds in the market. So they charge a fee to do that. Um, and that's historically been a district cost not assessed to either town. So if Hanson puts a, puts a bond anticipation note out, the district pays the financial advisor's fee for doing that. Or Whitman does it, the district pays it. It hasn't been gone, it hasn't gone to town to town. And I, I believe Ms. Byers had a question about that and wanted to speak about that.
Yeah, I mean, I think you, I think your question was, is, so if, if we put it in as an operating expense, then it's essentially split, you know, 60/40.
Yes.
Whereas if it's an indirect expense of a capital expense that is borne by one town, I think Dawn's question was, well, wait a second, you know, would it make more sense if, if Hanson has to borrow X and there's an indirect cost associated with that, then the bill should be sent to Hanson? If Whitman needs to borrow, am I getting it right?
Yeah.
Is that kind of what you wanted to talk about most?
Good question.
Thank you.
No, yeah, exactly. And, and I'm wondering where that conversation happens, where Hanson would have come forward and said, oh, school district, can you, you know, obtain the bond or the ban for this capital expense? And we do that. Is there then a conversation of, yes, and there's a cost and that goes along with that and that cost is going to go to the individual member town? Does that conversation happen? Maybe it needs to happen or, um, right? Because, um, I, I know our member towns actually have better bond ratings than we do because we've used our E and D and we got a letter last year that our bond rating went down. So I think as a district, you know, it costs, we have, costs us more to borrow money, the interest rates. We, you know, our member towns have better borrowing power because they have better bond ratings online. So I, I'm actually, you know, interested by, you know, one of the member towns made that choice and, and then there's that cost that goes along with it and the district has paid that, um, cost.
Yeah. Right.
And as far as the interest rate goes, the, the borrowing town is assessed that. They don't, you know, they don't get by on the interest at all. I know this.
Yeah, but wouldn't you want to get a better interest if they borrowed it themselves? They had better borrowing power.
I believe.
That's my point.
The way it was structured, and I'm just, I was on the peripherals, but because it was a district project that the town approved, the district did the ban. I believe that was the original intent. I don't know that anyone delved as deeply as to what the advisement fee, I guess that would be the way to say that?
It's an advisory fee, yes.
And how much money is that?
Uh, it was, I think it was $500. It was, we had an unpaid bill on it, which was prompted the discussion, so I think it was $500, $550, something like that.
So, and I mean, I think it's totally appropriate to send that bill to the town, you know, and ask them to pay that bill because it's part of their project.
Right.
You know, I think that's, that was a very good catch. I didn't know that that bill ever existed. So that's a very good thing that that was caught. And the same for Whitman. If they want us as a district project, you know, to do so, we'll be glad to do that.
So I think when Dawn brought it up, we wanted to have the full discussion as committee. I would agree with, I think that was her sentiment. And I think that's your sentiment. I would agree with that as well. And I think that's, you know, perhaps a change in process that, John, you could just reach out to Lincoln and Lisa and just say, hey, we, this is something we identified, this is how we're going to do it going forward. And then to Dawn's point, you know, thinking out loud, if their bond rating is better, you know, certain projects, DESI, building projects, et cetera, they, they have to go through us. But other projects, if it's something that as those projects become identified in the future, if there's a cost savings to the town by them doing it directly, we, we're certainly not going to argue, right?
HVAC and Hanson.
Yeah, HVAC and Hanson would be a perfect example, you know. So I think for like the middle school, I think we have to do that one, I think.
We have to do that.
We have to.
Yeah, I'm not talking about that.
But there's other project, there's other projects. So, John, does that give you enough guidance of, that'll be our kind of a process going forward? And, you know, again, this one's $500, I don't think it's a big deal. But is everyone comfortable with kind of that, taking that direction going forward?
Absolutely. Would you like a motion?
I don't think we need to motion. I think it's just a, we, we, for the record, the minutes are reflected, this will be the process, unless Chris feels otherwise.
No, 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 I just wanted to make a comment that, um, this, like, for Dawn to catch this and bring it to the towns, it's, it's along the same lines as John or Sean coming to us. That, to me, feels like a good interaction and, and.
I think it's, I think it's a little different because I'm not sure the towns would necessarily know, um, of the bill, right? Because if we're just taking it.
I'm not, I'm not saying they missed anything. I'm not saying that. I'm just saying, to your point.
Well, we can do better and share and improve process? Absolutely.
Exactly.
Hundred percent.
Yes.
Hundred percent agree. Absolutely. Absolutely. Great. Thank you, John.
Thanks, John. So.
John, was he going to?
You want the, the kindergarten report?
Yeah.
Yeah. Can you have that?
Oh, yeah.
Sorry about that.
Is that in this?
It's not in the packet.
Okay.
I don't believe so.
At the last meeting, um, we talked about, um, we had, the subcommittee meeting was back in the summer, a lot, last year, uh, working on kindergarten. And I had come up with a, a chart for 19, 20, and 21 about the subsidies. And I remember that I had done that and I had updated it through, uh, through yesterday for, and actually today for fiscal year '22. Again, I did this an hour before the meeting, so I haven't had a chance to pass it out to anyone. Is that something that they, I don't want.
You want to just put it in the packet, Fred, or we can give it to you? Or we could just?
Should we do it orally and then email it tomorrow?
Sure. Okay, so, so, um, the 19, well, 19, 20, and 21, I guess your question was, what was the general fund subsidy? Is that what you asked? Okay, so, um, in fiscal year '19, the subsidy from the general fund for the, for, um, the kindergarten revolving was zero. In fiscal year '20, it was $146,40808. In fiscal year '21, it's 200, was 241,79291. That's just a, that's a, things that were charged to the revolving fund, but were, um, were then, the revolving fund did not have enough money to pay for it and it had to be charged back to the general fund. If, um, and then so far through March 9th, um, there's been no subsidy needed. Right now, it's, um, we have $118,000 in the, in the kindergarten revolving fund. So there's none needed. By the end of the year, there may be, I'm not sure. Is that, does that your answer, answer your question? Because.
Little bit.
Because I think you had asked what the, what the general fund portion of full day K was too. So I, I can give you that. Fiscal year '19, it was 404,000. Fiscal year '20 was 340,000. Again, I'm rounding the numbers off. Fiscal year '21 was 257,000. So far through this year, we, it's been, it's 284,000. So that's in addition to the revolving fund.
Okay. So would I be incorrect in saying, if we look at, we're being given a cost for full day K of 750,000? Now, if we're already spending 284,000, that should come off of funds that we need to raise and appropriate toward full day K if we've already been spending that money in our budget.
It's already in the general fund. So 740 would be the incremental cost above that, yes?
Above that? So it's a million dollars for full day K?
As of right now, yes.
740.
That's the full cost of the program, yes.
I just want to understand, because the way my mind works is, hey, great, did we just lower?
That's what I was thinking.
Our cost? You know, just be able to start it and.
And that's, that's on the sheet too. So again, real quickly, fiscal year '19 was 867,000, the full, full cost. Fiscal year '20 was 966,000. And fiscal year '21 was 979,000. So it's very reasonable that it could be a million dollars at the end of this year.
Okay.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
So you have in your packet, just a second reading of the job description. George, uh, for, for Director of Ops. George, Fred made a couple of comments. We made a couple of changes to the Director of Operations job description. Like to get that approved tonight?
There were two bullets that you, uh, that, there were two comments that you asked for. Familiarity with local and state building codes, as well as school budget project experience preferred. We, we combined that just for the, for ease into one, into one extra bullet. It's the second to the last one under such alternatives to qualifications. That's the only change that happened beforehand. Uh, as, excuse me, different than last time.
Okay. So can I get a motion to accept the job description as presented?
Okay.
Any, any further discussion? All those in favor? unanimous, great.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, George.
Just a vote on the 2022, 2023 academic calendar. There are no changes to that. The calendar is a start and a stop date. We will add the half-days in as we, we put them together for professional development, grading days such. Would you have a start and a stop date? In my pile here, I lost my calendar. Thanks, Chris.
Do we have it?
It's in there.
Yeah.
So you're looking at a school start date of August 31st and a school stop date of, of June 13th. 180 days.
So can I get a motion to accept the calendar as presented?
So moved?
Second. Discussion, Fred?
Good question. How many snow days is that filled in?
We just put the five. So 14, 15, 16, uh, 19, no, the 20th and 21st. Because the holiday is the holiday.
It's highlight. Get the black and white copy, it's all highlight.
Yeah.
Because I know that parents are going to ask, but the first day of school has been in August before, a couple years ago?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I, when you, when you have.
It's always in August.
I, I just, I just want to put it on record that like it's starting in August is not abnormal.
No.
Like that's, that's, that's all I'm getting out there because.
Twenty years.
That's what I'll hear on the, yeah, that's what I'll hear.
Teachers will be on the 29th. Teachers will be on the 29th, kids will be on the 31st.
Yes, Steve.
It, um, I was looking at this this morning and I, I thought, I know that they'll have a January 2nd as the, it's not the new, it's not New Year's Day, but as the day that.
The observation.
Would, would be off. Oh, yeah, the observe, thank you. That's the word I'm looking for. Um, would, does that tie in here or is that not become an issue?
It's, it is, yeah. Thanks, it gets a good catch, Steve.
Oh, I got up early.
We looked at it three times. And Sunday is the holiday, so it has to be observed on Monday, correct?
Just made the kids go to school.
Thanks, Steve. No, that's a great catch.
Thanks, Uncle Steve.
One for the kids.
This is my birthday.
So I will bring the calendar back.
Well, let's just make, let's just make a, can we get a motion to amend? Or unless there's more.
I have one more comment.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, do we need a voting day in November? Is there a prior?
Tuesday, the 8th is on there already. There's a no-school day, Tuesday, November 8th.
So we did honor their request.
You can't look at the black and white, you got to look at the colored ones.
I'm looking at, okay.
You know.
Oh, it says holiday, that's all, it threw me off. Okay.
So September, we can have school that day. We've done it in the past for primary. We haven't honored that request. We can, we can have a discussion about that. But we took off the November 8th.
So, um.
Because they asked for September 6th. And we did not put that on there.
So that would be the right, um, you want to just bring it back?
Yeah, I think we bring it back.
Yeah. Yeah.
So topic.
Can we withdraw the motion in a second? Yes?
I'll withdraw.
Great.
Yeah, Dave did the second originally.
Because we do, we do have a request from the Town of Hanson for September 6th off.
Thank you for that.
As a, as a voting day.
Oh, primary.
There's always a vote.
Speaking with the principal, because we actually spoke about this, and because it's September and the kids can go outside, we've had primaries there in the past, because they're not a regular election day. Election day, we need to close. So I think I'll bring it to the committee for discussion for next week.
Okay. And yeah, and let's make sure we circle back with Beth.
Yes.
Please. Okay, we'll do. All right, we can do that.
So that's passed over.
Yep.
So warrants, so warrant, I got an email from Hanson, February 1st, about warrant articles being due. We brought warrants to the Facility Subcommittee at the 16th meeting of the School Committee. So the Facility Subcommittee looked at what we had prioritized in October and had to shift a little bit because of winter and the roads. So in October, when we voted, we didn't have any roads on, on, on the capital agenda as our priorities. We really had to reshuffle that and put some roads on. So I submitted to both the Town of Whitman and the Town of Hanson, using the Whitman Updated Template, which Lincoln got to me in February, what they wanted, with a lot of explanation, pictures, and things like that. So both towns have the same pieces of information. So I'd like to just, you know, summarize briefly the warrant articles, and if anybody has any questions, we can change them. But this was what the Subcommittee had, we had talked about, and what we sent to the towns. And these are placeholders. This doesn't mean that if the committee wants to pull this back at some point, they can pull this back. Correct, Michelle? They're placeholders? Yeah. So again, Article 1, we talked about playgrounds for Duval and Conley. We actually put this together as a one lump sum. Duval needs a redo of a playground. The Conley, big playground, needs some updates for ADA compliance and some repair. And they have an interior playground, which we'd like to, we have to remove or redo, because it's out of compliance. So the first warrant article is $700,000 for those playgrounds. Second warrant article to Whitman is to repair the parking lots and roadways of the high school. Drive-in now, and you'll see why.
Feel.
We did not know that in October.
We feel why.
Our, the third one is $100,000 for HVAC for Whitman Middle School Gym, to try to eliminate some of the mold issues that we've had in the past. Again, Ernie has asked for that in the past, and now we're going to try to rectify it until, if and when we have a new building, a renovation, or remodel of Whitman Middle. Article 4, we talked about trucks, the sum of $78,000 to purchase two F, F250s. That might be a low cost right now. I'm not sure that's what Ernie gave me. Yes, Fred?
Is that, that's a certain town share?
Yes.
Two trucks are more.
That's correct.
W4 is the Whitman one.
Yes, it's the, I'm just reading Whitman right now.
Okay.
Article 5, appropriate sum of $45,000 to get the large fans, the big, you know, big fans for Conley. I don't want to say it in public, but I'm not supposed to. But those two fans for the Conley ceiling. We've asked for those in the past. I think it'd be essential now. Article 6, $6,000 to replacement schedule for the rooftop units and chillers. We're looking at a study to prepare a replacement schedule for that. The RT, I call them the R2D2 units on the high school, frequently are down, and Ernie wants to look at, it's a total of $10,000, to look at a study, to hire somebody to say how we can do this better and put us on a schedule. Article 7, sum of $13,000 to reimburse the district for four variable frequency drive replacements for the rooftop units. Again, we had to replace those. If you walk the hall on the third floor in the fall, you heard them banging, and we had to replace them. And then Article 8 is the mold reimbursement, to remediate the mold in the gymnasium that happened in Thanksgiving. Town of Hanson, $25,000 to replace the phone system that was passed over for the high school at Hanson Town Meeting a couple of years ago. They passed over, they approved the Indian Head in Hanson Middle and passed over the high school piece of the phone project.
Has Whitman approved that?
Whitman has approved that.
Okay.
So this is the only piece that's out there. Article 2 for Hanson is 118 to repave the regional high school roadway and parking lot. That's Hanson's side. Article 3 is $200,000 to repair the Hanson Middle School driveway. Article 4 is $51,000 for Whitman's, or Hanson's half of the trucks at 51-2. Article 5 is Hanson's portion of the replacement schedule study for the rooftop units. Article 6 is $25,000 to refinish the Hanson Middle School gym floor. Article 7 for Hanson is $8,500 for the variable frequency drive devices that I just spoke about for Whitman. And Article 8 is $11,700 to reimburse the district for the repaired boiler inspection at Hanson Middle School. So those had been talked about through Facility Subcommittee. Some had been already costs that we had to send out, notified Lisa and notified Lincoln, and had to put on as warrant articles.
The fire panel and the smoke sniffers?
Yeah.
I don't see those on here.
We did not, we did not put them on at this point.
I have a question about the playground.
Yes.
Are there any grants and things that would?
So I, I have Representative Sullivan looking at grants for that, and she was looking at an earmark. I have a Zoom call with Rep. Sullivan on another issue, and I will bring it up to her on Tuesday. She said she's looking for us to defer those costs.
Right, well, so that's what I mean, that that wouldn't go on for $700 of capital, so.
I think we're looking for that expense, and if we find a grant, we can lower that cost.
Okay. That sounds better.
Anyone else?
It's a lot of money.
Yeah, so there's a lot of money in general to both towns.
Yes. And I know we're not, I, I, we tried to prioritize, there are certain things, those playgrounds, I know we talked about it, Facility Subcommittee, they need, they need a redo. And I don't know if it's one-time money, if it's ARPA money, if it's free cash, if it's us looking at doing that. We have to do these articles at this point and see where they flesh out.
Now, will the Finance Committee be going over these also?
I hope so. We, we have a capital meeting next Thursday to discuss school capital in Whitman. So we will be there 5:30 next Thursday.
So do we need to vote to support what we said?
Yes.
Or vote to approve?
Yeah, vote to.
So motion to approve as presented?
So moved.
Second. Great. Any discussion?
I have one discussion. As a regional school district, when we vote these, to place them on the warrants of Town Meeting, it's my understanding that's what happens by mass general law. So in the past, I think there's been some discussion and negotiation around, well, can we take, pull this, pull that? I think if that's a conversation that's going to happen with the towns, legally, if we could check with mass general law, it has to come back to our committee to vote. And then we then vote to remove that from the warrant.
That's correct.
Can we please?
That's my understanding, too, but I'll check with Andy.
Okay. And that would follow, so I'll show VOTEC. They send a assessment with, includes capital, and there's not discussion around that.
Any additional discussion? Fred?
Yeah, I believe in the past, once the school committee has agreed to it, we just simply pass over the articles on Town Meeting. So if it's after the warrant's printed, then they just pass over it.
Unless we find out that we have money coming in and can change it.
Yeah. You can always amend it.
I don't believe that that's the proper way, though. I don't believe it is. I think the committee has to vote to remove.
No, no, I'm not saying the committee doesn't vote. I'm saying if the committee's voted.
And the warrant's already printed.
The warrant's already printed.
Oh, okay.
Then we would motion to just pass over, because it's by the vote of the committee, not.
Oh, okay.
Any single person.
Good. Good. Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Wonderful. Okay, committee, Subcommittee reports. Fred, anything on Whitman Middle School?
Yeah, Whitman Middle School, we had our walkthrough today with our request for proposal for designers. We say it was about eight to 10.
Yes.
Now, was that all of them, do you know?
Yes.
That was all that?
That was all that came.
Wow. That's all that applied?
I don't know, though.
You don't have applications yet? Those are due March 29th, I believe.
But I was just wondering if they had to be there today.
Oh, no.
They don't, they don't have to be there for the walkthroughs to apply. No.
So it was a decent turnout. Ernie gave a decent tour. I was there for a portion of it, as Jeff was. Seemed like a good array of folks, you know, that were there with their notepads and cameras and taking pictures. Bob led the, our middle school principal led the tour and went over some of the educational plans, et cetera. And hopefully, we get some very aggressive bids on the request for proposal. We'll end up having a designer committee. Hopefully, everything goes smoothly, MSBA approves that, and we will have someone that will start working on the design aspect for the next phase. And I believe that runs through '23.
Correct.
So we're not there yet, and it'll take some time, but.
Yeah, there were a lot of questions, you know.
Oh, Beth was there, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and they asked, and George, and they asked us if we were tied to the building.
Oh, no.
George and I both said no.
Tied to the building house.
Well, you know, like.
Emotionally.
Emotionally tied to the building.
Nostalgia.
Would we find that people would be emotionally tied to the building?
Like maybe around the neck?
Yeah, right, right.
I said, no, I've been in Whitman for 48 years, no.
Take a ceiling tile from the gym.